I think I'm gonna go ahead and read our announcement and hopefully Tony will be down in a second. It is Monday, July 15th, 2019. Sorry, we're starting about 15 minutes late. It's 5:45. And this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, the notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Hopefully, board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda. And with that, I will make a motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
Any questions on the agenda tonight? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Great. Is there anybody wishing to speak to the board tonight for public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to our action items. And on our consent agenda tonight, we have minutes of the July 17th regular board meeting, dispersments posted to July 15th, 2019, out-of-country field trip requests, ratification of contracts, and a resignation.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any questions on that? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Consent agenda passes. Action items tonight, some budget adjustments with the presentation from Andy Sarno.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Kirkagard, thank you for your time tonight. A few housekeeping items as we're looking at a revised or an amended budget to reflect anticipated activity. I typically like to see the budget as a spending plan. It's a plan at one point in time, and often the plan does change. The information presented to you this evening reflects a slight change from when the budget was originally presented and approved back in October, set with the levy and the mill rate and all of those other items at that point in time. It is a fairly formal process in order to amend the budget or to have these approvals of the adjustments completed. It is required per state statute to have a two-thirds vote. We will, upon approval, if this is approved, within 15 days, publish a document in our local newspaper reflecting this so the community can be aware above and beyond the presentation this evening. I have to admit, it is a little bit later. This is typically later than I like to see. We'd normally bring this in April, possibly as late as May. I have done it in June. It is allowed. It's a little bit later than I'd like, but it is, like I said, still allowed. And we will be doing that, bringing it forward earlier in future years. But I'd recommend it at this point in time, which is why we're requesting this opportunity, is it does reflect, as I began, that change in the plan, or the spending plan. So some of the numbers that I've included, and this is a document, again, familiarity, and I am piggybacking upon approval. I will go into the quarter four revenues and expenditures in the aggregate, which did make an assumption that this amended budget or the adjustments would approve. But it's comparing October's approved budget to the amended budget, which we're recommending at this point in time, again, for 2018-19, and then a difference. When we take a look at all funds within the district, we approach $100 million budget. Typically, we talk about a $70 million budget, which is really just our general fund. But then we have our special education, which is a little bit of a duplication of some of the things that meets our special education obligations. We have our debt services. We have our Fund 50, which is our nutrition. But we do have approximately a $100 million budget when we aggregate all of them together. Initially, we did have a surplus of all funds by about $2.5 million, though if you recall, we did levy additional dollars for debt payments, which is those future payments that we've spoken about in the past, defeasance of debt. But when we take a look at just our general fund, we originally had an October budget of about a $1.5 million deficit. And as we walk into Fund 10, again, we have a fund balance of about $14.7 million after the current year. We've decreased that a little bit. I found about $200,000 of a dollar amount that was previously not booked. So we did have a slight increase in our revenues, though we've had a very minimal increase in our expenditures totaling about $12,000. So after everything is said and done, general fund, we're looking about $182,000 change. Or instead of the $1.5 million deficit, it's now down to about $1.3 million. However, in the numbers that I'm proposing, and you'll see this in the revenues and expenditures in the aggregate, there is a little bit of flexibility. These are unaudited numbers that we're looking at for both presentations this evening. And even though we've had minimal salary or benefit changes or purchase services, these different categories, there is a little bit of flexibility that we'll see both in the budget as well as the expenditures to date. We've yet to complete the audit. There may be some changes there, but we're in a healthy spot. Again, this is good news tonight, a couple hundred thousand dollars less of a potential deficit. And if you remember from my 1920 budget, I had a fourth page on the document with some comments. I actually made just a subtle tweak in that. I put those comments right here with, within the, by fund. So like I said, October deficit, 1.5, updating that to 1.3. Final activity, we're still within the audit, within Shank. They've now been bought out by CLA, Clifton-Larson-Aaron. But we are underway. We had our preliminary audit, went very well. But that's our general fund. Fund 21, which is our gift fund, initially, we didn't have a budget for expenditures. That's the kind of salmon orangey color. I've now reflected $101,000 of expenditures. And that does track with the expenditures that we've incurred. Fund 21 is a little bit weird. We do not have a negative fund balance. That's the way that we account for it. It has a little bit different rules. There's actually a fairly large fund balance in that. But the way that they account for the fund balance, that negative $289,000, when we put in that expenditure, it makes it look like the negative fund balance still remains. That's not the case, but it's the way that we're required to account for those monies. Since they are donations, they're not a part of our general fund. But reflects our anticipated expenditures, and then as well, cash flow. It's a little bit suggestive, subjective. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
Andy, is that primarily a timing difference, then? Is that what that is?
Yeah, exactly. And that's my second comment. Cash flow, money in, money out, it doesn't follow. So some student group might have done a fundraiser in the spring. They're gonna spend the money in the fall, but somebody else might have spent the money in the spring. They're gonna do the fundraiser in the fall. So, yep, it's all, it's all just timing with money in and out. Thank you for asking. I need to look up a little bit more. I apologize for not acknowledging that sooner.
I will interrupt you.
Yeah, good. Start adjusting your microphone. I'll do that. Fund 27, special education. This updated activity, very minimal, both on the revenue as well as the expenditure side. It reflects IEP-driven services to that population of students. And that's why I've got that number three comment literally throughout. We had minimal money, minimal additional money coming in from the general fund. However, we did acknowledge a little bit of additional money from the state, both through categorical aid as well as the federal revenue through our couple of grants that we receive. So that's on the revenue side. And really, that's offset because Fund 27, our special ed, has to balance. So that's really reflective of the needs on the expenditure side, salaries, benefits, purchase services. So we did see an increase on the salaries and benefits. That was where we accounted for people out of the general fund a little bit differently. But we did see a decrease in the recommended budget for the consumables, which are the supplies, minimal with the equipment, a little bit in purchase services. But Fund 27 remains balanced, please.
This isn't, can I assume this isn't all of the IEP-driven expenditures? Just the ones that can be separated out? Because so many of the kids are integrated into classrooms.
Yeah, so when I say that, if, we would still have an obligation to provide services to students.
Right.
But that's really driven based on their needs, so.
So I guess, I mean, I, I know that this is satisfying the requirements, but for someone on the outside looking at this, they might assume that these are all the expenses related to special education. That's not really the case.
It is.
It is?
Yep.
So you could, so there's a number of, you could take the number of students with IEPs in our district and divide that into the total, oh, Sharon, yeah.
That's what I was gonna do. Yeah, you're bridging very well into a new requirement that's been in place six, eight years now? Yeah. So yes, that's exactly what we do.
Okay, so we can calculate the costs that we spend per, on average?
Well, in addition is the maintenance of effort. So we have to spend the matching dollar amounts from the general fund. So there's more than just the grant that helps pay for these services. We also have the preschool entitlement grant, which is for our little bugs from ages three to five. In addition to that, there's some of my other grants that help fund it, but not, I am no way guaranteed that money from year to year. So the flow-through account, which is those special ed dollars, the preschool early entitlement, and then the matching dollars through the general fund.
And where you are going is, yes, we take these expenditures. And so I think it was about six or eight years ago, based on the federal government, and it was pushed down to the states. There's something called maintenance of effort, which says, last year, you spent so many dollars per student, you have to maintain that. I equate it to a high jump bar. Bar only goes up until there's only one athlete left. Maybe, not the best analogy, but the bar height. And very seldomly, if ever, do you get to bring that down. We get to write for exceptions on an annual basis. But generally speaking, if you spend so many dollars per student on an annual basis, that subsequent year has to match that. So yes, these are all for special education services. Yep, cross-categorical, speech and language, hearing impaired, vision impaired, all of those services related to special ed.
Can't imagine why they would go down anyway.
Well, they, go ahead.
I'm getting off track.
Well, some of it relates to our, I mean, there's a per-student dollar amount coming from the expenditures that we get from DPI. So that's based on our counts. We have two counts, one in September and one in January. So based on that, then we receive dollar amounts from the state. So depending upon the intensity of the services that the kids receive, some of them may be in a monitoring status versus more integrated into special ed classroom. So over time, we would expect some of our children to be dismissed from special education. So it is pretty consistent from year to year, the number of kids we have.
So having the, since we do have a large number of activities, it helps balance everything out?
Yeah, there's less, yeah.
Position changes every year.
The minimal fluctuations that we'll see is if there's an experienced teacher that retires, had been on the old, old-school bottom right of the salary schedule, and they're replaced with a less experienced, a less expensive counterpart. So you'll see some variance there from year to year.
So Sharon, if I'm correct, with $11,429,000, if we had 1,100 kids on the child count, you would have, on average, a $10,000 per student special ed cost. Some of those might be $57,000, and some of them might be $5,000, but the average would be $10,000. And so you're absolutely right. You divide the number of kids on child count by the total, and that's the per-student allocation. The big area why, why it goes down from time to time is if you have a very expensive out-of-district placement. So an out-of-district placement might be $100,000 or more than that. I mean, for a, I mean, for, we don't have, we were very fortunate. We tried to do in-house, but we still, every once in a while, have one. And so that $100,000 person ages out, or comes back, or moves to a different location. Now you've dropped $100,000 for one student, and that's why you might have that, that maintenance of effort go down a little bit.
We currently, yeah, we currently have one student placed out of district, and I'm very proud of that because that is unusual, but that's based on the skills in, that we have in our special ed teachers and their ability to serve those high-need kids.
Any other questions with special education? Thank you for those. Fund 29 is Head Start. We receive about $1.2 million, no change from October. So that's consistent with what was approved back then. Fund 38 is non-referendum debt. The plan has not changed. Again, we have a payment schedule that has not varied since October, no change there. Fund 39, which is our referendum debt, and again, I'd like to make a point that, again, we have a remaining balance after this year. That's the defeasance of debt, approximately $3.5 million that we can use for a future obligation. And just keep in mind as well, additional monies at any point prior to the approval in October, but additional monies could be levied for that purpose. We could, we've done it in the past. We could continue to do that. But it's not for actual completion of projects. It's really for the defeasance of additional debt payments, of future-year's debt payments. So I just wanted to point that out. So that will be used for that purpose at the point that either the debt is callable or as we near final payments. Fund 41, which is our capital expansion, this was created a number of years ago. The only change that I have at this point in time is that the increase of the $540,000. It's a recommendation, and upon your approval tonight, you'd be accepting that the Barton Elementary proceeds would be deposited into Fund 41. I've done quite a bit of research and made sure that this doesn't impact our ability to generate state aid as opposed to property taxes in future years. There are times where that can impact that. But it's a recommendation, since that is a sale of a property, that these proceeds would go into a future project. Could be used for anything related to those facilities projects. Next page, we have Fund 46, which is our capital improvement trust. Again, these, there are no, no change since October. The only variance is that, there is no change since October. The only activity since we cannot spend those monies prior to July 1st of this year, several days ago, is that we have some interest income as revenue.
Andy, is there a reason why Barton would go into 41 instead of 46?
I think the way that Fund 41 and Fund 46 are set up is that Fund 41 offers a little bit more flexibility with, with future aid payments and the way that our funding mechanism works. I worked with, I worked with Brian Brewer at Baird and made sure that we weren't impacting that, and that's, that's the recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
But it, very minimally, very minimal implications there. Fund 50, which is our nutritional services, our breakfast and lunch programs. No changes since October. It's a performing, and you'll see with the revenues and expenditures in the aggregate. It's a performing program that we have right now. Fund 73, which is our other post-employment benefits trust, money that's set up for future obligations. No changes since October. It still reflects the plan, the spending plan, as well as the revenue plan for these monies. And then Fund 80, again, no change since October. It still reflects those programs and services that were approved at the annual budget hearing and reflects the changes today, so. That is the budget amendment or the budget update as presented.
Good. I move to approve the 2018-19 budget adjustments as presented. Second. Motion and a second. Nice presentation, Andy. I like the format as well. Any more questions for Andy on this? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thanks, Andy. And then revenues and aggregates, revenues and expenses in the aggregate is July 1st through June 30th, 2019. This is a quarterly report, and we've got the report in front of us as well, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is a little bit smaller print. I've worked a couple more columns in. Again, this is the same quarter three format that I'd used. And I do have some comments here, by fund, again. And I, there's a very large asterisk that we have at this point in time. Since it's quarter four, that does go through June 30th. These are unaudited numbers. That's why I did put the unaudited in the yellow. I'd like to point that out because we're comparing that then to the prior fiscal year, 17-18, but those are audited numbers. So in that far-right column, we're gonna see some pretty large variances because the auditors need to make some adjustments yet. We need to make some final, final journal entries, reconciliation and whatnot. So it's, it's not the best comparison. I think the quarter one, two, and three are much more, have much more value because of that. However, as we present the same information in the same format at our annual budget hearing, you will see this information updated, reflecting those final adjustments we make, the final adjustments the auditors make. So that will be reflected. You will see this one more time in the near future, within the next couple months. Okay? Both revenues as well as expenditures with our general fund, we have a little bit of flexibility. First of all, on the revenue side, we are overstated, and this was true back in quarter three. We were overstated with our local revenues as well as, because those monies need to be journal entryed down into our debt service funds. You'll see a couple zeros down below with some of our 30s funds. So those need to be moved. That's not untypical, that they'd all be receded here and moved eventually. It's all a commingled bank account, but that's where it's been accounted for at this point in time. Large item here, third-line state sources. It looks as though we're only two-thirds funded, based on our budget. That's actual at this point in time because we receive a very large payment after the end of the fiscal year. That receivable is yet to be booked, but we're, we're right on track, literally to the penny with that $36.95 million. Federal sources, those monies are in transit. I reported earlier that we're doing some grant claims. That is those federal monies. They've yet to be booked. They are on transit. We're all on track, as I promised back a couple of months. Other miscellaneous sources, which are some, some of the other proceeds that we receive and we book differently, those, those track very well. I think it was an anomaly last year that we received $300,000. This year, we're only, I'm just shy of that. But our budget was very grossly overstated this year. It should not have reflected that much. Where last year, at this point in time, the $126,000 was vastly understated. So I think we found a common $250,000 or so for future-year's budgets. On the expenditure side, this is where I'd mentioned, we have a little bit of flexibility yet. We're at 98.7% of our salaries. That actually translates to a couple hundred thousand dollars that, at this point in time, I don't anticipate that we need all of that. Though at the same time, if the auditors were to make some adjustments specific to our Fund 27 with special ed, that, that could sway a couple hundred thousand dollars. Our benefits are pretty well set for the year. We've, we've utilized that. That's all reflective of any post-employment benefit transfers and some of those other things. Our health insurance performed fairly well for the year, so that's, that's all reflected and covered under that area. Our purchase services, it looks like we're a little bit understated, but yet we have, we have not yet reflected our open enrollment bill for the year. So that's several million dollars, and that's where you'll see that difference there, that, here in the next two months. That will be acknowledged. But generally speaking, though, we are performing pretty well. We did expense a little bit more in our equipment this year. That was reflective of previous spend plans, both one-to-one devices. We had some expenses related to the new timekeeping system. That's all reflected in this expenditure as well. So we're able to cover that. Again, we still minimized the original $1.5 million deficit down to 1.3. My guess is that we're gonna outperform that by several hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we're gonna come close to acknowledging that true deficit. Fund 21, minimal changes here, again, which are our gift fund. I think we had a stellar year last year on the revenue side. We didn't quite perform that. But again, as Chris pointed out, it's really reflective of some of those fundraisers with collecting money and spending money. We're performing where we should with Fund 21, no concerns. Fund 27, special education. Again, the general fund transfer, we do need to acknowledge that. That's another portion that was seen above where there wasn't any money acknowledged yet. But we will be making that transfer once the auditors arrive, again, in August. State revenues, that's performing well. We do have claims coming. And then as well, federal revenue, which is, again, more claim money that will be acknowledged here in the next month. Expenditures, I think we're on track very well. They performed a little bit better than we thought they were going to. But again, I've updated the budget to reflect all of those IEP-driven expenditures. I think it's performing very well. Fund 29, no, no, no real worries here. The decrease in the revenue, the $764,000 as opposed to the $1.2 million of budget, those monies are in transit. We're in process of doing our final claims for this Head Start federal money. Fund 38, which is our non-referendum, again, I said, we overstated our money up in our general fund. This is one of those areas where we need to journal entry it, much like we do in Fund 39, which is our referendum debt. So no worries. We will get that done here prior to the auditors arriving in August. Fund 41, which is our capital expansion, we're pretty well done for the year. The expenditures actually did reflect true expenditures that, with the projects that Dave Ross and his team put together, so that outperformed a little bit on the expenditure side, but we do have the ability to capture that through the revenues that were generated. Fund 46, which is our capital expansion fund, our capital improvement fund. Again, only activity there is the actual interest income. It's doing well. Fund 50, no changes since October. We're booking our final revenues, both on the student side as well as the state and the federal side. So it's fully anticipated that they're gonna perform well. They had a surplus built into their budget of a couple hundred thousand dollars. I believe once everything is booked, it will perform. They're gonna be adding to their fund balance slightly. Fund 73, which is our post-employment benefit trust, everything is on track as it was originally anticipated. The only positive is that our interest income is performing very well. We've found the ability to be able to have that garner additional interest without jeopardizing any risk. It's doing very well. We'll make sure that we maintain that in future years. But on the expenditure side, it's performing exactly as it would have. Fund 80, our last fund, our community services. Over the last several years, we've not fully spent that, this, this funding source through these projects and these services to students outside of the typical day. This activity is consistent with that. We could do some journal entries to incorporate some expenditures out of our general fund. But we do have a three-year spend plan that we're gonna be bringing forward. We've previously, previously spoken about it. But I'll be bringing that forward in the 2019-20 budget through the expenditures with those services. All in all, I, I think the budget's performing very well to the activity that we've seen tonight, both on the revenues and the expenditure side. And I really don't have any cause for concern. There's nothing that came out that was alarming. I think it's performing like it should.
Very good. Any questions for Andy? Do need to take a motion on this tonight?
I move to accept the 2018-19 fiscal year quarter four revenues and expenditures in the aggregate report as presented.
Second. Any more discussion questions? And Andy, both the 18-19, well, I guess mainly the 18-19 budget, that is not, that is not final-final until it's been audited in the next couple, is that happen here in the next couple of months?
Exactly. So the, the budget was approved in the last motion, the activity itself. That will be finalized through the, the auditor's adjustments, any final journal entries and bookings that we have. We have our auditors. It'll be back mid-August. They will do their final work. And we should have final numbers to be able to incorporate in the September 27th annual budget hearing.
Yep, great.
Very typical for that to happen.
Yep. Any more questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Andy. Good presentations tonight.
For your time.
We'll move on to our annual declaration to our parents. It's a notice of the district's student academic standards for the 19-20 school year.
So you had received these previously, and we had it on the agenda at the last board meeting. This is the annual notice that goes to families through our website and web communications. It's also linked on the, with our handbook, our student handbook. So are there any questions from the board members on the annual declaration of standards?
My question is, when you click on these hyperlinks, do you have to have Google Drive to open these?
You should not have to.
Okay. I just clicked on one of them that takes me to a Google Drive. ASCA, school counseling. Okay. Yours open. What am I doing wrong?
I don't know. Yeah, that's where, oh, is it because you're not signed into your Google account? Like, if you sign in as Joel on your, that mustn't school history.
Well, I guess that's my question, is do I have to have a Google account for some of these?
No.
Okay.
You shouldn't. They are all PDF.
Okay.
And the, I can double-check the permissions, but the permissions should be that anyone can view.
That's my only question. I wanna make sure when parents click on these links that they are able to open them and, you know, if they're PDFed or whatever, so. Yep.
I'm sure Tim's got it. I'm sure Tim's on.
And it could be because we're on the And it could be because we're on the district wifi. I don't know, but I just, again, I want to make sure that links and stuff all work.
And we can double check that if they, if they are to the, we did in the time that you had the originals from the last board presentation, excuse me, the business ones were linked to the webpage from DPI. And I felt that that was just making parents really dig for the standards. So if you look at the business information and technology ones, they're also now PDF'd. So that they don't have to search the website for them. They can find them directly.
So it also requires less bandwidth to pull those up as well, which if you're doing it on your phone.
Exactly. It's easier.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any questions on the, on the, this is the declaration and parent notification. We're not, the standards have already been approved. We're just now approving the notification to parents. If not, I can make a motion to, I approve, I move to approve the parental notice of academic standards for the nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Second by Nancy. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Thank you. In our reports tonight, we'll start with our, yeah, we're moving on to reports. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual curriculum plan.
Thank you. Each year before the, prior to the start of the school year, so prior to September one, the board is asked to approve the annual curriculum plan. In the past, our board members have received a very thick binder, which provided the course overview documents for each course. Those are accessible on our website and through our BYOC program. And so I'm going to run through the other aspects of the curriculum plan. There is no approval tonight. However, I would take questions and I can address those tonight or bring them back at the next board meeting. With our new format, we would be asking for approval at the first board meeting in August. The second board meeting will be more of a workshop time. So as we talk about the curriculum plan, it's important that we come back around some of the foundational pieces of our curriculum in West Bend. And policy three ten identifies the mission of the school district as set by the school board, the, our vision for the school district, which is excellence for all, and the core values, guiding philosophy and educational goals. That guiding philosophy of continuous improvement means that we utilize those PDSA Plan Do Study Act cycles on a regular basis. And that practice in West Bend has really become embedded in what we do and it's kind of how we think and operate. Through the board policy then, we look at the state standards as well, or state statutes, excuse me. And in the state statutes, it specifies the things that need to be included. And so it kind of defines what the curriculum plan would mean. So you can be in a room full of people and ask them what does it mean when you say curriculum? And you can get, if you have twenty people, you can get twenty different answers. So for this purpose, we're going to talk about sequential, that the curriculum is sequential. It's an organized set of learning experiences that build on previous knowledge and skills that the curriculum includes the objectives and course content, the resources that are used to support student learning, and then the specific time allocations. The state statute requires that we identify that we have enough time within our student day and how much time is dedicated to our different subjects. And then there has to be an evaluation component for the curriculum. So let's talk about sequential. And I'm going to use mathematics as the example throughout this presentation tonight. Our K eight curriculum is really by grade level. Students move through with their grade level peers through our curriculum. Our primary resource in four K is teaching strategies gold. Our primary resource in kindergarten through fifth grade is the Bridges Curriculum Resource. And our primary resource from sixth grade through advanced algebra is CPM or college preparatory mathematics. So K eight is moving through at by grade level generally. We have some students that are accelerated or are in a compacted curriculum, and that's really based on individual needs. Those students who are in the compacted curriculum get every year's worth of instruction just at a faster pace. However, our students that are accelerated might skip an entire year's worth of curriculum. And that might happen in the K eight range. When they get to high school, they're following the next course in sequence because of the prerequisite knowledge. So the flow chart on the, on your right, as you're looking at the document on the screen, is from our course sequence book. So this shows the sequence of our courses at the high school level. And if you enter at algebra, algebra is a graduation requirement. So students take, have to take algebra in order to graduate, as is geometry. After that, there are different pathways that students may take. Three credits of math is required in high school. Beyond that, it is considered an elective. So this is the sequence identified for our math progression in school. When we look, I'm going to highlight a couple of grade levels next in our presentation. And so when we look at those objectives that we have for our students, we turn to the state standard to identify that, those boundaries for instruction. Like what does a student who is exiting fourth grade need to know, be able to do, and what understandings should they have developed? So this is not all of the standards, but it's a brief overview from the state standards of some of the areas in fourth grade mathematics. So our curriculum plan from the standards and the sequence then goes into our course overview. This information is taken right from our Build Your Own Curriculum. When someone goes into our Build Your Own Curriculum, I have to click out a few of the others, excuse me. This is the first screen that they will see when you enter into Build Your Own Curriculum. Then the individual can select the course subject and then what grade level they would like to see. When, sorry, I link these all up in advance. Fourth grade for the course overview, when anyone who wants to access that looks, this is what they will see. It identifies what the learning is focused on for the year, the units of study, the standards it's aligned to, how the students are assessed or asked to show proficiency. And then it gets a little deeper into the units of study. When we look, as we're progressing through mathematics and students get into eighth grade, the standards overview from the Wisconsin State's academic standards, these are, this is a cluster of them. So in eighth grade, you'll notice that the categories of the standards have shifted from fourth grade. It's that sequential building on that knowledge and expanding that further. So then when you get into our curriculum, yeah.
Are these minimums or?
So there's a lot of perspective out there that the state standard is the ceiling. And realistically, this is like at the end of fourth grade, at the end of eighth grade, you should be able to do this. It's not the ceiling saying you can't, you don't go beyond, but it really is the floor. This is the base that we need to try to get all of our students to.
And if a student does not meet these standards, there's a solution for that.
So when we talk about our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, when a student has not yet met all of the standards, when they're on, so a fourth grade student hasn't met them, they go on to fifth grade. That information is accessible to their fifth grade teacher through STAR, their STAR reports. And so they can see that. We also will continue to do STAR as a universal screener. The students have pre-assessments that they may take in the individual classrooms. And so depending on where the deficit is, some students receive what extra instructional support in addition to what happens in the classroom that is not special education supports, it's just intervention. And so depending on where that gap is and how deep the need is, it may be with an additional teacher. It may just mean prior to the start of a unit, the teachers, the classroom teacher is pulling them out in small groups. Or it might be along the way within a unit. The teacher is working in small groups with the students in order to provide some remediation or even some acceleration.
And these. This, this floor, so to speak, that's determined by our district, not the state.
So the, the state has determined the state standards.
Okay.
We locally have adopted the state standards.
So if ours are more rigorous than the state's then, and we have kids going through it just fine, then we can be known as a destination for excellence, so to speak. Okay, good.
So fourth graders progress through. We looked at some of the clusters of standards in eighth grade and the, there are differences in the categories of standards that students are working at because of the level of sophistication in math. This paragraph is the introduction in the eighth grade overview. So the eighth grade overview, that's in BYOC, has the introductory paragraph, which kind of talks a little bit about how the CPM, the college preparatory mathematics, has students working and really spending a lot of time engaged in problem solving. And so that paragraph is a little introductory. And then it states that upon completion of the course, this is what the student should be able to do. And so it summarizes all of that in the statements below. So anybody looking at our course sequence could go through all of the grade levels between fourth and eighth, or they could just pull out the grade levels which their students are in. Then as with all of our documents in there, we have the unit titles that the students are engaged in during that course of study, the standards that are being utilized, and then again, the measures of success. How are we evaluating student performance along the way? And again, we get into the further elaboration of the units of study beyond the title. So instructional time is one of the components that is listed in state statute that we need to make sure that we're providing instructional time for our students adequate to allow them to achieve the standards. And our start times for each of our schools is, are listed there. This year, we talked a lot about minutes of instruction. And as you know, we have the, we rolled out our three-year curriculum plan for ELA, our balanced literacy processes, and looking at that as a pedagogical teaching method. So along with that was studying our instructional time. So this is, as you note, in draft because we are progressing towards this for our instructional minutes in the elementary and intermediate levels. Each of the areas on here, it is, are linked to the instructional minute documents. So Badger Middle School, this is their bell schedule. So when we look at a mathematics block or a ELA block or an elective block, we can see how much, what the bell schedule is. Currently at Badger, the practice for, I want to say the last five or six years has been that they have a double block for English Language Arts. And then the high schools' bell schedule is also linked. So you can see how much time is spent in each class period. So the part of the curriculum plan is identifying what are those targets for each course, each department, each level. And those are again reflected in the standards document that is in the annual notice. So along with that, this is just a snip of the annual notice. The link to the math standards, and you were clicking through some of these earlier, the link to the standards is in PDF so that one can look through it, look at it by grade level, or look at it by standard of standards and follow along to see how something develops. In doing so, you'll note in kindergarten, we start with counting and cardinality as an area of our mathematics standards. That appears in kindergarten, first grade. It's no longer part of their instruction because it should be mastered by the end of first grade. So that area of standards drops off. Systems and functions picks up in sixth grade, but it wasn't present in the earlier years because of that level of sophistication increasing. So our curriculum is housed in BYOC or Build Your Own Curriculum. During the course of this year, we will review that. We've had that in place for a number of years here as well. And our courses are listed often as being revised. What that means is it's open for, and certain people have access so that it can, they can add in assessments or add in tasks that are done. But they're not changing the course overview itself. So being revised is an indication that it's just open to certain people. The, in the executive summary, I had put down the pathway and then we revised the website a little bit. So this is the accurate pathway after the website's been revised. So the way to find BYOC is to go to the district website, click on About Us, and you'll see the dropdown where it is curriculum and instruction. And when you click on Build Your Own Curriculum on that page, this is the public view of what opens up. So anyone can go through this view and the access the public would have would be, I clicked previously on the subject mathematics and then all grades. We can identify specifically second grade if we want and do a search. And then the second grade will come up. When the public clicks on second grade math, then they have access to this information.
We have some people in our community that are concerned about the science curriculum. How in-depth does the description go in the BYOC if a parent is investigating the science curriculum, for example?
So let's pull up science and let's go to third grade. When they click on third grade science, they will see these two courses. One says previous and one says being revised. So if I open that up, they'll get the overview, which includes the modules that are present at that grade level. And then again, those three modules. So it's the amount of time and then a brief description. Within our science modules, yeah?
Are the names, are the titles of the textbooks for the class also linked in or tagged somehow?
We use FOS for our science program and it should be, yeah. So FOS does have, it's a kit program. So the students are in motion and matter as they're studying it. They're doing multiple experiments, recording data and getting some of those experiences, drawing conclusions, things like that.
Is that a kit that, is that a kit that they could, a parent could Google and read reviews from other around the country? Okay.
And we've been using the FOS program in this district for twenty five, over twenty five years. But we've revised them as, as the Delta is the company.
Good name.
Has revised the curriculum. We have also, last, the year before last, we did revise several of the kits that were in progress. in progress. And then, last year, the 6th through 8th Science curriculum was revised to be, we are now utilizing Amplify. And if you recall the presentations, I think that, I am not sure, Kurt, if you were yet on the board, do you recall? I don't either. I don't remember the timing of it, last, not this school year that just ended, but the previous one. Well, it was summer, because the teachers were really excited about it, and we were going to wait, but they really wanted to dig in. And so we did go ahead, instead of delaying the approval, we brought it forward. I think you probably were.
I think it was spring, yeah.
So 6th through 8th has all been revised. Our 9th through 12th Science will be in the process over the next year or so. We're starting to look at, our biology textbooks are quite old, and there's a group of science teachers working this summer on a physical science class.
Is it a fact that even some of our past science teachers, just talk about science curriculum, are instructional consultants for other school districts that actually are setting up a science program? I just want to call out our science program, it seems to be exemplary in this district, and some of the teachers I know I've communicated with are consultants to other districts. Is that, am I stating correct?
That's correct. So some of our teachers who've left the district are now working for, like, Delta and doing trainings and things like that. The reason I could go, that was 25 years ago, kind of quickly, is because I was trained by some of the West Bend teachers at that time in FOS, and I was, one of them, I just retired, not this year, but last year, and so it was just, yes, it has, we've had a good, solid program for some time. Okay. Are there any questions about how you could review the curriculum that's in place, you know how to access the standards, and the course overview documents? So it would be my intent in October to bring forward any new courses for the high school level that we'll want added into the course planning guide, and those would then be added after approved, so that students could register for them for the 2021 school year. So next month then, at the August 12th board meeting, I'll be asking and requesting your approval of that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move along to our annual district at-risk plan.
Good evening. We're in team mode tonight. We are shifting some of the responsibilities out of teaching and learning. So Laura and I are, she's transitioning the at-risk program under my leadership, and she will be doing more of the title programming. So I'm here tonight to go over our plan for our at-risk program and ask questions tonight, and I will return at our next board meeting to ask for your approval. So each year, we have to do an at-risk plan, and this plan was created last year by Laura. So my responsibility was to update and do the revisions. So, you know, we do have our Head Start program in our district, and that provides us a great opportunity to our youngest learners and really talk about any kind of strategies or programming that we can adjust when they go to 4K or kindergarten. We have a good idea of where their strengths and areas of concern are. When we talk about at-risk at the elementary level, we focus on attendance, and also we use our updates on our PALS, which is our early learning literacy screener. We do not have a lot of formal assessments when they're little for obvious reasons, but as we go into middle school, I'm sorry, elementary school, Laura talked about that multi-tiered systems of support. And there is an academic venue, and there is a behavioral venue in how we support our children when challenges arise. So when we look at attendance and our declining scores and assessments, those kids are brought to the attention of the Pupil Services Team at each elementary school, and they analyze that and create plans of action to help remediate those skills. And then when we get into middle school, we learn more about academics and learning rates, and what you had asked, Tani, if the children aren't performing at a certain level, that is part of the Pupil Services Team at each site, and then they move into the intervention model. When we get to high school, there is a separate link from this document into the high school because that gets very specific when you're looking at credit deficiencies, et cetera. Janet Hadley started this past year as the at-risk coordinator at the high school, which is great for us because she was formerly on my team, so she knows the other side of the services for kids if they enter special education. So with her support at the high school, she is streamlining the interventions for students at that level. So we have a comprehensive plan, starting with pre-kindergarten through high school. The specifics are documented in the information that you received today through the board docs, and I will be creating the final version and presenting that at our next meeting for your approval. So do you have any questions about the services that we provide, or any specific questions related to at-risk?
Both this presentation and Laura's on the curriculum, or you guys were very thorough putting things on board docs, and I really appreciate that as we prepare for the meeting. And of course, that's information available to the public as well, so very thorough, and I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any questions for either Laura or Sharon? Okay, we'll see both these in our August meeting. All right, Mr. Fisher went to his first CSU 6 meeting, let's hear about it.
All right, so on Tuesday, June 18th, CSU 6 held their first board meeting for this term, and spent about half an hour with Ted Nitsky giving an overview of CSU 6's services, for those of us who aren't as familiar with it. And then we moved into election time to establish a board of control for the seats that were open. I did not choose to engage in active participation as a candidate. I figured I've got enough to learn here in my first year, and then we'll see what happens next year. But very enlightening, you know, some former Westbenders, obviously, up there working for CSU 6 and good services, and Don, I don't know how familiar you are or we are with everything, but you can have their annual report. And, you know, I'll continue to attend even though I'm not on the governing board, just be a member at large and report back as appropriate.
Appreciate your involvement.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Kirkagard?
Just a couple of quick announcements. It is already the middle of July, and we will be back at it before you know it. We have our first leadership team meeting, August 12th and 13th, and that would be, excuse me, the committee or the team of all of our principals, assistant principals, athletic directors, cabinet officials, and so that's the 12th and 13th. Back to school in-service is August 26th through the 29th, with our large day on the 26th. And so for any of you who can plan on attending, we would certainly like to recognize you all on the 26th if possible. September 3rd is the first day of school, and so, like I said, we will be back at it before you know it. A couple other quick announcements, a fun announcement, one is that Sharon had shared with me, the Barden Apartments will open up in October. And so the Barden Elementary School was sold to a private developer, and so we're excited about the fact that potentially, we've got some new kids that will be moving into the apartments. I think Sharon said that we already have a couple of families that will be moving into the district as a result of that, and Sharon, maybe you can share a little bit more on the Barden Apartments.
Yes, I met with Katie. She will be the onsite manager, and she lives in West Bend, and her kids go to our schools, which is great. They are opening 22 apartment units mid-October. She has two families that are moving, that are on high priority, and they each have four children who are coming from outside of Washington County. So I'm staying in touch with her. Today was the first day, applications were being accepted, so we are very excited. And potentially looking at the enrollment at Green Tree, that's where the elementary kids will go, and making sure we have staffing necessary. Some of the families are going to want to start school in September, and they are able to do that under a couple provisions through DPI, so I want to make sure they get that accurate data. And also feel comfortable accessing another system. The amount of paperwork that's required to enter or apply for those apartments, it can be up to 20 pages long. So she was onsite using space at a local bank for the interview process today, and her team there. So as they are accepted, she will let me know, so we make sure that we have the best staffing possible at Green Tree, being the elementary that they will go to. And I'm working with Katie to provide a tour for you guys closer to the date where they move in, because they're gorgeous. They're really nice, a lot of services they have. They have a general room where we're going to provide some tutoring for the kids, and we're working on some supports for the parents, since Maureen Park is right around the corner. So it's helpful to have someone who lives in West Bend manage the apartments, and we'll work collaboratively with them to make them feel welcome. So any questions about that?
Sharon, are these units solely in the old school, or is this also in the green space?
The apartments are in the old school. The townhomes will be open in December, so that's like the second phase that you probably see out on the grounds.
Okay, thank you.
Don, is the 26th that morning assembly with all the teachers, okay, staff and everything? Okay, and that's at 8:30?
I think, I think actually started at 8:00 last year, didn't we? Or was it 8:30?
I believe it is.
Okay, yeah, so I'll let you know, but it's either 8:00 or 8:30. Opening the session, still working on seeing if we can find a quality keynote speaker for a 45-minute motivational if we can. We don't want to break the bank for that to happen, but if we can find the right person, if not, that's fine too. But we're looking at that, and certainly it's an opportunity for us to introduce you to our staff, if that's available, if you're available, and we'll go from there.
Kids may have been very interested in the summer.
Okay. Yep, I think maybe we started last year, we had coffee and something earlier, and then started the actual session at 8 o'clock in the morning, and I think that's what we'll do again this year. Other than that, just a reminder, we're going to, we'll have school board meeting on the 12th of August, which is Monday, the 12th, and then we'll have a closed session after the meeting to talk about negotiations. So ahead.
Great. Don covered it. We've got a meeting on the 12th, closed session afterwards. Thank you for coming early tonight. Kind of our first meeting starting at 5:30 instead of 6:30, and here we are getting ready to leave a little bit before 6:00, or 7:00, I mean. Any further items, or for the good of everybody here?
I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Thank you very much. Great week.